I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, call the meeting to order. There were no agenda adjustments, and I'll accept the motion to accept the five sets of minutes that are listed on the agenda, but you have copies in your package.
I'll make that motion.
Hanover?
Second.
Second, Whitman?
We just mentioned that there's going to be amendment to the...
Yeah.
So we're going to attempt as amended?
As amended. So it was Hanover and Whitman. All those in favor?
Aye.
unanimous. Okay, now we have student advisory council. Peyton?
All right, well, we had some activities go on during May, starting with the Environmental Club, raised over $700 in donations, filling nine trucks with 45 tons of electronic recycled materials. And we also had the prom held at the Hingham Country Club with 250 students. The sophomores took their MCAS exams. Just last Saturday, the BPA held a blood drive in which they collected 30 kinds of blood, mostly donated by SSPT students. And also, we held the epilepsy walk slash run, in which we raised over $1,400 in memory of Zachary Looney. In June, the sophomores are going to be taking their science MCAS. We're also going to have our Night of Excellence on Tuesday, June 10th. It honors students for their performance and growth in their academic and shop programs. Friday night, June 13th, at 6:00 PM at the Music Circus in Cohasset is going to be the graduation for the class of 2013.
What year?
2014, sorry.
They're coming back.
We're going to do it over again.
That's just a dry run.
And also, we have started planning the end-of-the-year field day events.
Thank you very much.
Mr. Chairman, if I could ask Peyton to add one more thing to her report. Fifteen minutes ago, you had a different outfit on, and you have some good news to share. Like it said for the record, please.
The Lady Vikings just won their first softball game 18 to 13.
Peyton's last night tonight after being two years with us here, so we'd like to say thank you to her. She's going on to Wentworth next year, so we wish her well with that, and we thank her for all her efforts over the last two years. Thank you, Peyton.
Thank you, Peyton. Okay, so now we have the student and employee spotlight. Dr. Hickey?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. This is a great, a great night, and we're thrilled once again at our May committee meeting to be able to talk about not only Skills USA and some just phenomenal success at that state competition, but also you'll hear a little bit later after Skills USA, we'll learn a little bit more about the Business Professionals of America as well. So it's my pleasure to introduce our Skills USA advisor who puts in countless hours for this task, Mr. Bob Mello, who's one of our metal fab welding instructors.
Skills USA is an awesome program that's used in vocational education. We had four students who actually grabbed medals this year at the state conference, two of which, which are gold. They're going to go on to the national conference in June, June 23rd to the 28th. Last year, one of those students actually grabbed a silver medal at Nationals, that was James Agia. So this year, we're going back in hopes of grabbing gold. Hopefully he does. It all started back in March. We were at the district conference down at, I'm going to correct, hopefully says, Bray New Bedford, yes. Bray New Bedford, and we took approximately 100 students down there. From that, we had about 30 kids that moved on to the state competition, and that's where we grabbed four medals in various competitions. So it was an awesome program. The kids did great, and excited to be part of it. So, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Oh, absolutely.
James Lloyd, welding, he grabbed bronze. Might I add, he was, he was sick, as you can imagine. He had, he had tonsils that were the size of grapes, and I'm not exaggerating either. They probably still are. He's going in for surgery soon. So he, he performed very well in some very intense circumstances. Last year's national second-place winner, James Agia from Nurse. We also had Shannon Allen, who received a silver medal in graphics. And Stephen Lee also received a gold medal who will be going on to Nationals in June for ad design. Those are four medal winners. Thank you.
Thank you.
Yeah, just, as I said, just fantastic news. Congratulations to all the students and their families. And now I'd like to, I'd like to introduce Stan Zavatsky, who's one of our computer information technology instructors, and he is also our advisor to our, to another very important student organization, Business Professionals of America. Mrs. Zavatsky.
Well, we've been around for just two years, and we've been very lucky where Christina had Brennan meet Nationals past year, and she was, because she was not feeling so well, but she really did a good job there. It's been a slow and steady progress for us. We only really have seven members right now. Next year, we're going to be increasing it once again. Our goal is just really to be a part of the school, part of the school culture. We've really done it for the first two years. We've been doing this with the blood drives. We've held four the last two years. Really want to get back to the community, be able to have our students participate in the school, especially with donating blood. Will we try to do more like those areas next year? Our growth, we're actually looking at adding graphic arts to be part of this, is promoting my shop right at this point, but we want to add more people to really participate in it. I mean, it's very similar to skills, where it's a focus on leadership, giving back to the community. We do have competitions from IT to graphic arts to accounting, to, so they do the business side of things. Christina was like, she did extemporaneous speech, and she qualified. It was really, we're very happy in our second, to get someone to go to a national competition already. Now, I was saying, Christina, stand up.
Christina, extemporaneous speech, I wouldn't ask for that now, but would you, would you care to share any observations from your experience, what it was like, what, what did you compete in, or some of the other activities you participated in while you were out there?
I just participated in an extemporaneous speech, but I had two minutes to prepare a speech, and then I just performed it in front of three judges.
And you've been part of our drama club for all four years or three?
Yeah, four years.
So that, did you draw on those skills and talents?
That's my little secret.
Congratulations, that's fantastic.
Great job.
So there are two, I mean, the Brennan family also, we can, we can say thank you to Coach Heather Brennan, our science department head, who is Peyton's softball coach. Well done, Mrs. Brennan. Everybody to friendlies, there we go.
On you?
Sure, sure, I got five bucks. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Okay, so we'll move on to the reports. Mr. Kelly?
Good evening. Nice to be back. I missed last month's meeting, but I'm here again. The treasurer's report was sent in the mail to you, and we have a Memorial Day motif on the front this time. We move on to page one, the summary of our financial position. I just want to note, there's a typo on the interest rate for the Mass Municipal Depository Trust. It should be 18 basis points, not 182 basis points. But again, we continue to make a significant amount of money on our investments. We made five basis points on our money market account, 18 basis points on our investment account, and almost $2 million last month, we made $189. So, the rates are projected to stay this way until middle to late '15, so it doesn't look like we're going to be able to enjoy any additional interest. The checking account is high because the next day I had a payroll. It's over $300,000. Usually, it's under $100 at the end of the month. The last month, it was 74. So, that's the reason why it's so high. Does anybody have any questions on our summary, on our financial position on April 30th? If not, we'll go to page two, which are the revenues, and the second column is what we received in a month. The town of Hanson missed the due date of April 1st of their assessment, but we did get it on April 3rd, so that's not too bad. All right, but they were the last town to pay us our April 1st assessment. And again, the chapter 70 money, you can see that the $318,000, again, is coming in 12 times a year, whereas in prior years, it came in four times a year quarterly. Does anybody have any questions on the revenue? If not, we'll go to page three, which are the expenditures. And at this point, we have closed the budget down. You know, we're trying to reallocate funds, and take care of some needs, and spend the rest of the budget. Item one, salaries and wages. We, we look to be okay. We're not going to overspend that because of various number of reasons, but probably maybe less than 1%, a little more than 1% favorable there. It's not a lot of money, but that's good. Workers' comp, as I've been mentioning to you every month, number two, the $11,000 is a favorable variance because they, they rolled the rate sooner than I thought because of some accidents we had. Item three, the unemployment payments. There's an $18,000 favorable variance there, but we're still disputing $21,000 paid to an employee that we terminated. It's like dealing with a black hole. The unemployment people are not responding to us. They paid him without having a hearing, so the HR person has written a number of letters, and we're waiting to hear back. But if we lose this, then that account will become unfavorable, and we have to do a budget transfer into it. Number eight, utilities, looks pretty good. I'm estimating that we're going to have about $20,000 favorable variance there. Number 14, payroll taxes. Again, every year, this is problematical because I never can really guess what's going on. We're probably going to be a negative $7,000 there when we get to the end of the year. Item 15, health insurance. At this point, I'm estimating we have a $50,000 favorable variance. I had, when I did the budget, I had expected a rate increase, and as you know, or as you remember, Plymouth County or Mayflower Group did not do anything. They kept it at zero, and I guess this year, it's pretty close to zero too, right? That's right. They're using up their reserves, and again, in next year's budget, I had projected a small increase, so it's a good thing. Item 23, books and instructional supplies. We have $64,000 left that we're looking at reallocating to areas that need the money. Item 25, shop supplies and equipment. There's only $4,500 left, so we did a good job there, as far as the vocational shops went. 29, recruitment, has a $12,000 favorable variance, and it's because we changed some of the things we do on our recruitment videos. But we're looking at reallocating that money. That's about the highlights. Does anybody have any question on another item I did not mention? Okay, if not, we'll go on to the infamous graphs, the pie charts, and the month is, again, you know, you see the revenue. We have an assessment coming in, and the chapter 70 money, and down below, largest piece is the Kelly Green piece, which is salaries and wages for the month. And a year-to-date, the next page, because you better clear a picture of what's going on. You can see that the red part of the chart represents what the state pays us for chapter 70, and the Kelly Green piece is what the towns pay us for assessments. As I've mentioned before, that used to be 50/50, but you can see by the split in that pie chart that it's not 50/50 anymore. The towns are paying more of our budget. And again, the bottom part shows our expenditures through April, the largest being salaries and wages, which is $5 million. So that would be the treasurer's report, Mr. Chairman, and I have one budget transfer. As you saw here, we had all these students participating in the Skills USA competition while we didn't have enough money to fund it all, so I'm asking to transfer $12,000 more into that account to cover the fact that we had a tremendous amount of students participate, and we had to pay cost for that.
I'll ask for a motion to accept the treasurer's report of Cohasset. Do we have a second? Rockland, all those in favor?
Aye.
And I'll ask for a motion to accept the budget transfers. So move, Hanover, Whitman? All those in favor? Okay, yeah, speak, White.
Okay, we've sent you the executive summary. I guess this, we hire an actuary every three years to calculate what our other post-employment benefits liability is, because we're required to disclose it, and we're trying to fund it, as you know. And what's happened is, since the last time we did this, which was in 2010, the accrued liability has increased by $1.1 million. It's gone from 4.4 to 5.5 million liability. The reason, the major reason is that, if you look at the page that has the graph on it, it shows you how many retirees we have. The last time we did this evaluation, which was four years ago, we had 26 retirees. Now we have 52, and they're projecting as far as 69, another 20-ish, but that could change because people may decide to retire early. I really think that when you do contract negotiations, we have to try to find some way to get this OPEV number down. Right now, we have funded about $450,000 of a $5.5 million liability, so you're short 5.1. If we funded it annually, we would have to put in $499,000 in the budget.
Per year?
It's almost 5%. Yeah, per year. It was 443, but it's gone to 499. But we have done, you know, you should be commended because we have done more than what most communities have. We have almost a half a million dollars put away, and when the interest rates turn up, that will be earning us money and cutting into the liability that's out there. It's just, you can't earn anything on it now.
Right.
So I just, again, I think two things you need to do. Number one is try to get it limited through contract negotiations, and secondly, try to fund some of it every year, either by way of the budget or other ways. Anybody have any questions on that report?
No, I just have a comment. Looking at their projections, this is almost like the national debt.
Yeah.
It grows so, so fast, and think we'd never catch it. And we're not alone. Everybody's the same way, but I have to agree with you as far as we have to try to control our costs in our contract negotiations to, to at least help us a little bit, and we have to take squirrel away every dime we can to put into it, because if we don't, and those with wisdom decide to push us on it, we and many others will actually go broke. So, just my comment.
Okay, if there are no other questions, the only other thing I have is that Mr. Manning and Mrs. Day are up for reappointment, and we sent the letter out. You should be hearing. Hopefully, decide to stay with us.
All done.
All done? Okay.
Done last night.
Good.
Reappointed.
Really?
Yeah, really. No, I got, I had a meeting with Selecton last night, and I was second on the agenda, and sat down, and I said, "Will you reappoint us?"
Yeah.
To explain the school, what to them, and various staffs on the school, and everything, especially Grassland Restaurant. It was, everybody said, "Okay, I'm on to those employees." And I'm glad to be here, I really am. I really am. I'm a bunch of nice people.
Welcome.
So how's that for a story?
Good, good. Welcome back. We still have graduation.
I got, I got the letter on Thursday. I made a head point, I'll set up on Tuesday.
Okay, next one up is the contract for Secretary Treasurer candidate, James Coughlin. Anybody have any questions?
As part of the subcommittee, I'd like to make the motion that the school committee, I believe you all got a copy of the contract, you know, make the motion at the same time that we hire Mr. Jim Coughlin as the new Secretary Treasurer, and the contract that you have before you. We went back and forth for the entire month negotiating different things, and we've come to agreement. We've updated it since the time Bob started with us without a contract, so I'm recommending that we hire Mr. Jim Coughlin, Secretary Treasurer, with a first-year salary of $36,000, and the rest of the contract is self-explanatory. And that is without health insurance. He's chosen not to take it at this time, but does not preclude him from taking it in another contract.
Do we have a second?
A second.
Okay. Whitman, seconds. All those in favor? unanimous. Congratulations.
Welcome aboard.
I'd like to stand up and introduce yourself, too.
Jim Coughlin from Abington. Thank you again, Bob, for all your support. It's been, it wasn't that, negotiations weren't that bad.
No, no.
But it was just, I enjoyed working with the subcommittee, and I look forward to taking over on July 1st for Mr. Keller, who's very well-respected in the world of finance, so thank you.
Congratulations.
Okay, now we have the chairman.
You've got a sign.
Yep. Superintendent Director Dr. Hickey?
Thank you again, Mr. Chairman. Very brief report from me this evening. First up, budget and stabilization article update. We have had seven town meetings. We have had seven towns vote to support our budget, so by, by agreement, that means we have a, an approved budget for fiscal 2015. With regard to the stabilization article, we were able, again, with Abington's town meeting still ahead on June 9th, with the seven town meetings that were held, we were fortunate to get an affirmative vote from the required five towns, so I'm pleased to report to you that our stabilization fund article was approved. And when we get into the next fiscal year, I'll be working with, with Jim on whatever it's going to take to set that up. So thank you all for your efforts in your communities to continue to advocate for us. Second item, MSBA accelerated repair update. I should, I should know on June 4th whether or not we have been invited to participate in the accelerated repair program. If we are invited, I will be bringing you at the June meeting a motion to have you approve us being part of the accelerated repair program, and I'll be sure to explain the details to you in advance of that. But I've been in contact with MSBA officials, and their board of directors meeting is in June, and there's a very scripted timeline that goes along with that. So as soon as I hear, I'll inform you well in advance of the next meeting and what the next steps are. Item three, I want to thank Bob, Moller, and Kenny, and Dan for attending the, for attending the general advisory committee meeting. I thought it was, I thought it was a very, a very solid, detailed discussion. Great to get feedback from our advisors. The continual message, there's always, there's always a vision that we want to try to strive for, but they were very appreciative of your support in the equipment and the resources that our vocational programs have, and I thought it was a very culinary, of course, did a very nice job with, with the dinner as well. So, as always.
Can I make a comment on it? And in the dinner, everyone that stood up and spoke about our school said how great we are, but they're all looking for one thing, and that was space.
That's right.
Every one of them was looking for space.
That is true.
And to the fact that we can double the size of the school, and we'll be adequate space that we need. It's almost like, it's too bad we couldn't go up and have all the sharks down the first floor, and then related on the second floor.
Yep, everybody wanted space.
I have one comment on it, too, and that was from the gentleman from AAA, and he really emphasized is to have the students ready to go to work when they graduate. You know, he didn't elaborate on the furthering of the education too much, but he wanted to have them tool-ready to go to, go to the job, and it's one of the things I've supported all along, and I should ask Tom some questions as we get along, and to answer some questions I have that I've forgotten over the years, the way we used to do things, so we'll be getting back to you. But I had to leave early because my wife was injured, and I had to go take care of her, but I did get that message, and he reminded me of Bill Landon, when Bill Landon was on the advisory board, having the students ready, be able to read and write, and write a repair order, and keep track of their time, and be ready to work, and the gentleman was the same way. Thank you. You did a great job.
Mr. Chairman, before I turn it over to our administrators for any updates, I just want to say a quick thank you to Jerry Blake. He earlier today participated in the drafting shops urban design presentation program and was serving as a judge, so Jerry spent a big chunk of today here at school. Thanks for doing.
Very impressed, and I didn't get to say anything to Peyton before she left, but she had a great presentation. Smart kid, great shot, really good progress.
Yeah, they did a great job. I agree. Thank you. And now, Mrs. Dutch, and, and the table, in case you want to update the committee on, on anything. I know Peyton talked about a lot of school events, so...
I think Peyton covered all our school events.
Except the graduation. I wasn't clear on the graduation.
It would be the class of 2014, graduating on Friday the 13th. Yep, we are, you know, I think Peyton covered it all. We did do the one new thing this year, I would say, is MCAS that's coming up in June for the ninth and 10th graders. This will be the first year that our ninth graders have taken the science MCAS. We usually give it in the 10th grade, so this year, we will be testing the ninth and the 10th graders. So, we'll be testing about 300 students on June 2nd and 3rd. But I think that's all that's new.
I, I, I think you're selling yourself short. You, you, you folks pulled off something this past weekend relative to our incoming freshman class.
That's Mr. Auburn.
Oh, don't be shy.
With Mr. Dinnicky's help, and also Ellen Whittier, who is our spec coordinator, the three of us met with approximately 80 families that are incoming eighth graders who are going to be ninth graders next year. The students were taking not, not placement tests, but knowledge tests, so we can gauge what they know and what they don't know. Benchmark testing, so we can gauge what they know and what they don't know. And at the same time, we had the parents down in our lecture hall, so we could kind of introduce ourselves, talk about what our missions are, what our goals are, what we expect from their students, what we expect from them, and start building that four-year relationship, and hopefully for many of these families, much more than four years, because they'll send more children here and keep us all busy forever.
I'll just add something to that, Tom. I was up at a baseball field, which is where I'm usually at now, at nights, and I had a parent approach me and ask me, "You still remember the social board?" And I said, "Yeah." And I'm like, "Okay, here we go." She's like, she was part of that group that you guys hosted this past weekend, and she couldn't say enough about your presentation and how well the communication was between you and the parents, and it was refreshing, because they don't get that from the town, my particular town. So I just wanted to commend you on that. That's, that's the feedback I get when I do speak to people that send their kids here, that you guys are doing a great job, and I just think it needs to get out there more. Excellent.
Thank you. And again, what, what is beneath the surface to this, to this event that Mark described is an admissions process that starts very early with recruitment. The fact that we have, the fact that we have confirmed acceptances from 166.
Eight.
166. As long as the first number isn't an eight, that would be a problem. 160, we now have 168 confirmed acceptances for our incoming freshman class, and we know that today, on May 21st, means we start the relationship earlier, where we can get IEPs earlier, we can build a profile of the kids coming in this building, and as Jerry pointed out, the parents get a sense of what to expect. It makes for a very enjoyable summer as they plan this important... It makes for a very enjoyable summer as they plan this important transition, but that doesn't just happen overnight, that, that's not a casual thing. We set this as a goal a long time ago, you folks pulled it off, great job, great job. Anything else?
Thank you. Nope.
Want to go out on top? There we go.
That's enough.
Eight.
Mr. Chairman, if I might just say that under unfinished business, this, this is the second month for the mathematics textbook, and if I may, under new business 8A, I'm looking for a motion to, based on the document in your handout, to approve the adjustments for the student handbook for 2014, 2015.
I'll make that motion. Hanover, Abington, all those in favor? Unanimous.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, I'll turn the rest over to you.
Okay, so now we got textbook adoption.
Yeah, just the, sorry, just the first month for machine shop textbook.
Okay, well, just the first month, machine. Out-of-state field trips, Skills USA National Competition, Kansas City, Missouri, I would say, Elijah, I need a, a vote to approve that out-of-state.
I'll make the motion to.
Hanson, seconds, all those in favor? Unanimous. And the next item is surplus equipment, drafting, sort of textbooks, and social studies, assorted textbooks.
I'll make the motion that we surplus the assorted textbooks.
Motion by Hanover, second by Abington, all those in favor? Unanimous. Okay, warrants, Ken.
Warrants for approval, warrants 20 and 21, $853,490.72.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Second, Whitman, all those in favor? Unanimous. Okay, requests for action?
If I could.
Yep.
I just want to take a moment and thank the school and the school committee for their kindness and sympathy cards and flowers on the passing of my mother. It was very well, very appreciated by my family, and it's a pleasure being part of this family, so thank you all.
Okay, I have a request, next month's meeting, if we could move it up to, say, 5 o'clock, so that we can all.
I'll make the motion.
Okay.
I'll second it.
Kohasek, excuse me, Noel and Hanover, all those in favor?
Aye.
Unanimous, so next month's meeting will be at 5:00 PM. I think we got a little, think of it this time.
Mr. Chairman, if I, could I add one thing under request action? I neglected to mention members of the committee. In your correspondence file, just to bring to your attention, there is a spiral-bound copy of the decennial NIASC report. There is no action to take tonight, but I just wanted to give you a heads-up that this is the year and a half's worth of work the faculty put in, we had that visit back in October, and so the, the commission voted to continue our accreditation, the report was just released, or we were authorized to release it just a few days ago. I'll be putting this on the agenda for the June meeting to provide my own overview of the highlights. Thank you.
You're welcome. Any other business, I'll entertain a motion for adjournment. Whitman, seconds, Kohasek, all those in favor? Unanimous. Thank you, ladies and gentlemen.
Almost a rocket.